That's the end of the citizen speakers.
Right, thank you. We have a resolution before, so we've had public comment. What's the will of the council?
That's comments from us.
Go ahead, please.
Well, it's been pretty obvious we're short of money. And, yeah, we're kind of on a sinking ship here as Dalton described it that way, and I would describe it that way. We got our hands tied on the general fund. Water fund pretty much is fine. Most of the other works pretty good, but we got our hands tied on how much money we can spend. Maybe we can raise property taxes. And it's less than the amount of inflation and it's a whole nother matter. But we, Mr. Rudy's correct, we're spending more than we got. We can't not put in back money for asset replacement or for CIP or anything else. We're, then, so we're fighting all that before the 4th of July. And then, this year's consequences of the flood that we know about, not everything we know about, but we, we are, we got at least $400,000 worth of overtime. It's not in this year's budget. And in one month, we were $600,000 short on EMS fees that we would normally have. So we're a million dollars in the hole, and we haven't begun to understand what else that we've got. And that's before, I mean, we were in a hole before the flood. And I think, I mean, nobody likes to say we need more taxes, but, you know, we've already a million in the hole. And if we go to the 8%, we're just getting $407,000. It's not even getting half of what we're out, and we're going to be out more next year. I mean, this isn't all of it yet. We don't know how much. So, we've got, I mean, for one thing, I think, you know, the long-term budget, we have the five-year budget, we're not going to maintain our required fund balance. We can't keep it at 25%. It's no wonder. I mean, and I don't, I think inflation's going to get worse. Now, I am a little more optimistic that the growth is going to translate into some savings. George may be right, we haven't really actually done the numbers. But I don't think we have to add police and fire and safety for RADA. You know, I think there is some. But that, beside the point, we really are in big trouble. And we got no, under current things, we're just going to get worse and worse. Now, Dalton's making some good suggestions about some things that we can do, but some of that, that's going to have to go to the voters. And so, but in the meantime, I'd think we need that 8%, that 8% cap. It's not, it's $10, $15 a month or kind of an average. It's not a lot. And the people that were, took losses on the real estate, they won't be paying that if we do that this year. They won't, they won't, they're going to have reduced property taxes. So, the people that didn't have losses are going to be the ones paying a little bit more, but it's not a lot. Anyway, I think we've got to think real hard. I certainly would propose that we do the full 8%. But in addition to that, I think we need to get an agenda item. And we've got a, we need, we really need to put a citizen group together to help us decide, what do we want to do? And, you know, what kinds of options? We can come, list the things we can do. And we can, we can scrimp and save, and we can do golf and park on their own funds and get them out of the general fund. We can do all these little things, but it's not enough to get us down the road. And so, we really, if we're going to put something on the ballot, we got to get started. We got to get, we need to get some consensus from our citizens and have some meetings, do something similar to what the school district did when they passed the bond issue. They had met in all the different school buildings. And maybe we need to meet at some different city facilities. And we need to talk about what's going on and, you know, because it's going to come down to some pretty tough service cuts. Police and fire and EMS and payroll cuts. And it's going to be, you know, we put this off, we're going to be really buried. I mean, we are kicking the can down the road. And we may have to do that today. We can't do more than that today. We're going to have to kick the can down the road some. But I think, and whether we have set aside a fund for disasters, well, we don't have near enough money to cover the disaster money we're already out. So I don't know, like, I mean, it'd be fine if we thought we were going to have more than enough, but we're not going to have more than enough. We're going to have near enough. And so, we've got a great city. We've got a lot of great amenities. We've got great fire and police protection. And we got, all these things in the streets are, have been in good shape. And it's, they're not going to stay that. These things aren't going to stay that way unless we come up with something. We can, we, there's options, but we need to vet those options. And we need to spend a lot of time in the next few months to get organized for this. So, whatever we do tonight, I suppose that $400,000 is going to make or break us. But, man, we need it. And every little bit helps. And if we don't have a good reason to ask for that, I don't know what more we, how better reason we could have to say, man, we've had these losses. We've done more than that in losses. And it affects the whole city. So it affects all the citizens, all the property owners, it does. It affects, it affects the quality of life in our community. And we want to do the best we can to keep the quality of life the way it is.
Other comments? Brenda?
Well, I agree with what you're saying. And I thought about that last time we voted on this tax rate, that we were pushing the can down the street. And honestly, now, if not, is the most critical time for us to be thinking about how we're going to support what we want our city to be. You know, good streets and proper protection for our citizens and all of these things. So, I wasn't prepared to think about 8%, but I was prepared to think about something more rate that we have, just the three and a half. I think we have to start somewhere. I mean, this is going to really be a booger for the next council or the next one that really has to start looking at some cuts and stops of services and things like that. That, I hope we never see. But it's kind of like your own personal income. I mean, if you have things that are affecting your own personal finances, maybe, you know, there's things you have to cut or before you start conserving. And so, I just think it's kind of a personal decision. We're here, we're the voice of these folks. And I would hate for someone in a couple of years from now to say, gosh, what the heck were they thinking? Well, we can't get, this street's not prepared, not projected to be fixed until 2030. So, I mean, drainage issues, and there's so many issues that have a price tag on them. And I don't really want to see some of those things go away. So I, when you look at it like the difference in someone's annual monthly expense, I think, I think they could manage that. If we're talking about $70 for an average family, if it was, you know, a lot more than that, I would be against it. But, so I'm kind of torn, because I want to, I want to think about what this, how this impacts families. But I also want to think about what it's going to impact them if we can't provide some of these services down the road. My two cents.
How long do we have to make this decision, Dalton, or go back on? Is it three years, is that what I understood at one point?
So, a couple, couple points of clarification as y'all are kind of talking about this. Whatever rate y'all discuss tonight, you can always go below that, but you cannot go above it. So if y'all adopted the proposed rate at 8%, y'all could go down to the 3.5% upon adoption. If y'all do the 3.5% tonight, y'all cannot go above the 3.5% at a future date. The disaster tax rate, from the way we understand it, and Mike, please correct me if I'm wrong, the disaster tax rate calculation would be done for three years. And then, it would revert back to the original tax rate. So it doesn't create a no, a new, no new revenue rate at a higher rate. It doesn't, we're not, it doesn't allow the city to step up for three years at 8% each year. It'll just allow you to collect those revenues at that higher 8%, but then it'll revert back to the original 3.5%.
Right. Ms. Behrens may know this, because we've talked about this. I think it's an individual assessment each year. It's up to three years, but we could make it next year, we can go back down.
Correct. Y'all could go back down. But it, but it, the 8%, I think the important part of it is, the 8% would not create a new, a new, no new revenue rate level. It would have to revert back to the original no new, voter approval rate or no new revenue rate.
I have a couple of other questions. So disaster relief, replacement funds for overtime and things like that would come from FEMA eventually?
Well, there's a lot of unknowns. So when it comes to individual assistance, public assistance, HMGP is not even an option right now. And we're trying to still see if that's an option, which is Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. We have so many unknowns that we don't even want to begin to speculate.
So if we had this 8%, this difference, this extra disaster relief funds can only be spent on disaster recovery, but does that include overtime and things like that?
Well, so that really is kind of up to council. So the way that there's no specific rule or statute on how you spend the money, it just gives you the opportunity to levy that additional tax to offset whatever you want. We were basically just saying, as a recommendation, if city council chose to restrict it into disaster-related expenses, we can tie those to any disaster-related expenses that would be over it. But what it would do is, what we wanted to make sure that the residents understood and that council understood, we were not going to tie in new positions or new, like recurring costs, into something that was going to go away. That was the most important, important feature.
That's a good point.
And if for some reason, you know, as, as we start getting these, you know, the numbers out there, let's say that we're able to cut, you know, cover down on some of the costs, but we're able to offset, you know, part of it through fund balance and part of it through the disaster relief fund, we can keep that fund there and use that for future disasters or future issues, you know, should something arise, you know, later on down the road, or when something does.
If we don't do the 8%, or, the first year, yes. Well, first of all, again, would not impact the people that had damage.
Correct.
Secondly, then, if you don't do it all, the first year, you still can do the second?
I, we'll have to get back to you on that one. We know that it can be calculated for each year, you know, for up to three years. And so, I think we'll have to get back with y'all on that, but we think that y'all still would be able to calculate it each year for up to three years and use it or not use it. But we'll have to confirm that one.
That's correct. I talked to Bob about that, that is correct.
So if we don't use it this year, technically, y'all could use it next year.
We have three years or to the point that our value restores to the value prior to the flood.
Gotcha.
So whatever lost value is, will we get back to what was our base before the flood? Then we would have to stop. So if we had a bunch of new value next year and we were back to that, then that's off the table as an option. But it's three years or whichever comes first.
More discussion, please. More questions.
As much as, we have time to think about it between now and the next.
But we have to make a decision to go to 8% tonight.
I would say, I would make a motion that we do go to the 8% tonight. It gives us some time to think about, maybe it's four, five, or six, or whatever. But it doesn't lock us, maybe we don't do anything. But I think we just, maybe ought to give that a little more thought. And so, let's think about the 8% in the meantime.
And to clarify, the 8% means 8% increase in the tax rate.
Correct. In the M and O only, only on the M and O side. And it's up to you, but we could provide the multiple scenarios for you.
There's several quick points that I'd like to make. First off, that law exists for communities that have had a disaster. And by every measure, by every rational measure, our community has undergone a disaster. Secondly, I agree with Mr. Harrison. I don't particularly favor a tax note for KPD vehicles. I know it's been proposed, and I appreciate the proposal, but I don't, I don't feel like that's the way to go. And I am not in favor of delaying general asset replacement. Because every day we do it. Every day we don't get enough altitude to clear the trees, those trees get closer and closer. And I'm concerned that if we don't stick to a plan, a prudent fiscal plan for general asset replacement, our community will be in trouble. Ms. Seagman, you said something funny. You said, if we make this decision tonight, in two years, people will say, what were they thinking? And I guarantee you, no matter what we decide tonight, in two years, people will say, what were they thinking? In fact, if we adopt the 8% increase in the, in M and O tonight, tomorrow, people will be saying, probably even tonight, people will be saying, what were we thinking? The thing I think that we need to be, what was I thinking? What, we need to be clear. If you, your property has suffered damage and you filed the paperwork for reduced value, you're not going to be paying more. The rate will be more, but the value will be less. Secondly, you know, during our discussion tonight, we were told that we had an increase in value of $71.2 million in property values. Meanwhile, KCAT estimates the city is going to suffer $65 million in reduced value. And the $65 million in reduced value is going to reduce income, property tax to the city at $275,000. The increase in value would increase property tax revenue to the city by $297, a difference of $22,000. But there is no increase. I appreciate the duress under which this budget was prepared. Dalton, I was with you many of those days at the EOC when we were not thinking about budget.
I still was.
Our focus was trying to rescue those in peril and find those who were missing. Our focus at the EOC remains to find those who are missing. And so, look, I would like this council to be prudent and think ahead. If we adopt a tax rate tonight that we can't go above later, then we've painted ourselves into a corner. If we adopt a tax rate that's higher, that we can come down from, that seems more prudent to me. I, I, I can already hear the names that will be called tomorrow if we adopt a much higher tax rate. All I can say is, I was elected to do what I think is best for our community. Not what I think will, will make me the apple of our community's, you know, not, not that will make me a popular person, for I am not a popular person. I think we need to adopt a rate that gives us some flexibility over the next few weeks to finalize what we think is not only best for our community, but what makes sense for those of us who plan to live here the rest of our lives. So, that being said, I would certainly entertain a motion. Unless you want to discuss this more, I'm happy to discuss it for as long as you like.
I'm just going to provide this up here. It's got the language on the bottom that if y'all decide to do a different one, the language at the bottom in Mike's handwriting is what we may be able to do.
The sad fact is, none of us can read Mike's handwriting.
Sorry, it wasn't intended for you. I'm happy to read it.
Well, he's one of many.
Look, I pay property taxes. I do. And I'm, believe it or not, the second youngest person here on the city council, and I, my taxes are not frozen. And my family owns property. This will affect us directly. Property taxes are a way for each of us to pay our fair share. Some of our neighbors have been hurt and hit with, worse than property damage. They've lost family. And if each of us can contribute some during this fiscal tragedy, I think it's worth, worth looking at, in my opinion. If there's anyone who wants to make further comments, that's fine. Or if you would like to make a motion, I'd be happy to entertain it.
I just want to, and I apologize that I stepped out, but just to clarify, since I wasn't here, if we go to the 8% tonight, we are not locking it in at 8% tonight. That is also not 8% of your house bill.
On the tax rate.
Because somebody said, oh, my God, my taxes are going to go up to $32,000 a year. No, it is not. I agree with what's been said when I came back in. We need to look at doing something. But also, I think about, like the mayor just said too, because we're not frozen. We're not, we all pay taxes. Our taxes aren't frozen. I've got to, you know, we've got to think about those who were not affected and what they're going to end up paying. But I also realize that this is only for three years, correct? So then, back down to what it was.
Correct. It does not change to a new or a higher no new revenue rate. This is not a loophole into increasing the no new revenue rate. Once the disaster voter approval rate is done, it goes back to whatever.
Last year was, maybe?
Yeah, we have to get the details on it, but it does not create a new.
But would it go back to the 5595, or would it go to the proposed 557?
5579.
5579.
05711 would be the new.
It's the M and O only, so remember that. We're only, we only deal with the M and O on the 8%. So the 8% in this case would be 5711 per the tax rate calculation for this year. Now, as far as going back in future years, there's, there's some nuances to that, and I can provide it for you. But we have three years to calculate at this. Doesn't mean we have to use it or a portion of it, but we have three years or when the city's property tax value comes back to what it was pre-disaster.
I think we definitely need to look at it, but I also think we need to let the public know, our citizens of Kerrville know exactly how much, if we went to 8%, what it's going to give us for infrastructure and rebuild, or if we went to 3.5%.
$471,000 would be the additional revenue generated off the 8% for this year.
$471,000.
$471,000 additional. So the $401,000 is based off of 3.5% plus the increment. And the additional of $471,000 would be going up to the 8%.
I can provide you with multiple steps to that if you want to. And remember, those are estimated based on the collection rates that we're determining, so.
And I know we'll have time to talk about it before our next meeting when we get to do the first reading, so.
I can bring those back to you on the 26th.
Something tonight.
Correct.
And one of the things that I'm concerned about is, and we've got a lot of expenses associated with this flood. I don't know what that number is. I have no idea what that number is.
We don't either.
I'm sorry?
We don't either.
Well, and, you know, we're, we're looking at FEMA grant reimbursement, but we don't know what that number is either. And we don't know what our 25% that we have to come up with. We don't know what that number is. So in light of all those unknowns, I feel like we don't really have any choice. But to do a little bit of both, whether we raise the tax rate a little bit and decrease the services a little bit, it's, it's, you know, I always look at things as wants versus needs. We are clearly in a climate of doing only what we need at the moment. But I think what we need may be a little bit of an increase in the tax rate. So that's where I'm at on this.
And mayor and council, you know, if I may, we did not come up with this and decide this in a vacuum this year. You know, the disaster was an extremely tragic and unfortunate, you know, event that we're navigating. But it did not drive the decisions within this budget. You know, you know, I've been, I haven't even been here two years yet. We started this process, when I got here, we started this process to, to really dive into the budget to better understand. So we, we already had the stuff on the horizon, but until we really dove into the weeds of it and said, where can we trim, what can we cut, where are we at, and started doing exercises, we knew this year was going to be the year that we were going to come, come and talk to you about the good, the bad, and the ugly, regardless of the disaster. So what, what I can pretty much say from our account, from my accountability standpoint, is we're going to continue to dive into this. You know, we're going to continue to look down every nook and cranny, figure out every solution, you know, to this. We're, we're not going to stop. You know, this is, this is us just talking about it, I'm going to say, really, probably for the first time openly, to be able to talk about these, so we don't have to kick the can down the road anymore. And we understand that this year is kind of that, you know, kick the can down the road a little bit. Again, we made a few changes just in light of the disaster in trying to, you know, navigate this. But we can't kick the can down the road. And, and as we navigate this, what you're going to get from me and our team is to make sure that we come up with solutions, that we don't have to do that anymore. And those are going to be some hard solutions. Oh, they'll screw it all up.
Take it down to 2.5% versus 3.5%, and so it goes. So your choices are going to get narrower in the future, but.
Once again, any further discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I would make a motion that we approve a resolution number 22-2025 that we, we adopt and impose a total, total ad valour of property tax rate for 20, for the 26th, is that the, at .5711, which includes an increase of 8% for the voter approval disaster rate.
I'll second.
All right, get it. If that's not right, y'all need to get up and correct.
So the total, hold on a second.
Hi, Karama.
Well, that's just, that's just the M and O.
Right, so let me.
The total is.
Yes, so that's, that is the total rate. So I don't know if that resolution differentiates M and O or not. I don't think it does.
No, so that's just the total.
So the 8%.
That's total.
That is the total.
That's just the, that's the maximum rate that they can now adopt.
That is the max.
.5711.
.5711 is the max tax rate that it could be.
That's the, that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Motion second? Mr. Hayes, do we feel that that motion is adequate to meet the needs of this resolution?
I, I do, and we'll change the resolution. The only thing I'll say too is that now that rate will be greater than the no new revenue rate and the voter approval rate. And so that, I'll reflect that in a revised resolution that I'll get you to sign later.
Yeah, no, that's correct. I was just going to say that there's going to be some language that has to change in there. And we'll likely identify the M and O rate separately, just for clarification, because that's on the M and O side only. So Mike and I will work with that, and then I'll provide you some scenarios on the 26th so that you can have better information.
Everybody clear?
Correct.
Correct.
Right. This is, remember, this is a process that the city uses. And we really adopt a resolution when we don't have to. But what's important is you all set the rate that now finance will put into the paper as notice. And you can, you know, as we've talked about, you can absolutely come down from that rate. But for now, that is the maximum rate that you all will be able to adopt moving forward.
Do you have a motion to second? Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. Posed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. No, you're good.
Well, that's a tough pill to swallow.
It is a tough one. I hope people realize what this council did tonight was try to do what was prudent, but what, not what was. and what, not what was, probably not popular.
I know it's done and over, but can I ask Julie a question on it? When you go, when you publish this in the paper, Julie, what's it going to say?
It's going to say consideration, public hearing consideration of a tax rate of 5711. That doesn't mean that that's what you have to adopt. You can do just exactly what you did tonight. There can be discussion. We can look at multiple scenarios, and then you can make a decision. You could go all the way down as far as you wanted to. You just cannot go beyond that.
Thank you.
I think for me, and I'm just speaking for me, not the rest of council. But I think for me, I would like to have a workshop before the next council meeting on the ninth, when we're going to do that, and invite the public so they can come. And we can go over every number, every tenth of a percent, so they would see where we're at and what we adopt. That's total transparency. And, you know, I don't have a problem paying for it because this is my community and I love it. But everybody needs to see what we're looking at. And that's, that's just my opinion, and I'm one of five. But that's what I would, I would request a workshop to invite the public. And if we need to do it somewhere bigger than here, then.
And we should include some discussion about maybe a citizen group or something, or where it might go for the future. Because it's not, this is a long-term problem we have, not just this year.
So, those would be items for a future agenda. And we'll try to figure that out tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to second, which is passing unanimously. Now, we're moving to item 3B, agreement between the City of Kerrville and the West Texas Healthcare Provider Participation District. It says Ms. Barons again. Is that who?
I could be really quick on this unless you'll have questions. But basically, the city council, along with, you know, Peterson and two other counties, entered into the LPPF or the West Texas thing. It's a mouthful, so I apologize. And basically, in that, Peterson and the other counties had, had asked if the city would basically be the administrators in this. So, it's a small hourly requirement per year where we're just basically being, you know, doing the agendas and doing that. In turn, they offered to put the max cap of the administration fee per state law at $150,000 to do the audits and to, you know, basically be the pass-through account holder. So, we would set up the bank accounts and do all of that. And that's what's before you this evening.
Any questions for Mr. Rice?
It's nice when you get compensated.
Do we have any citizen speakers?
No, sir.
Thank you. All right. If there's no questions, is there a motion then?
To authorize the city manager to finalize and execute this agreement. Second.
Questions have been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those on paper, so vote. Five zero. Passes unanimously. There's no need to go in executive session. And so, honor serving with you guys. Y'all are, y'all are some tough hombres, is what y'all are. I adjourn this meeting at 6:26.
Needed to make the motion.